I have 7:30. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drier.
Present.
Counselor Irvin.
Here.
Youth representative.
Here.
Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Counselor Merideth.
Present.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Sennett.
Here.
Mayor Solzhi.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items to be added to the agenda, I see none, and I'm going to ask that something be removed from the agenda tonight. I made a phone call to the Oregon Government of Ethics Commission, and apparently when you add an executive session and it is dealing with a public official, you actually have to, I did give a written notice and noticed it in time, but you actually have to list the date and time of the meeting and put the address of where the meeting will be held, even though it's always held here, it has to be official that way. And also let the public official know that they may request a public open hearing, and that was not in my written letter. So I'm going to ask that we postpone this tonight until our next meeting, and if that's okay with the council.
Yep.
Do we need a motion for that, Richard?
No.
All right, so moving on to item four, parents of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens' comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matters scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. And we have two people signed up. Patrick Cartwright.
Good evening. Patrick Cartwright, 2145 South Orange Street. I'm coming forward today because I feel like the equity that's being kind of tossed around, so to speak, within our business park is not conducive. We had one business that was in our industrial park that we shared a common building with, and we had incidents with people running into our customers' vehicles. I had contacted the city through our attorney, Zach Midich, the Hutchinson cops, and he worked with the city. Well, the city had been dealing with this for a year, and they had niggas out until we knew. Then these people are now in Cresswell and Marlowe. And directly after this, then we started getting enforcement action notices from the city employees. We went as far to have our attorney do a code interpretation. With this code interpretation, we enclosed a check for $105, which is cash from the city. We was denied the code interpretation based on assignment that was asked. So I got signed that this was used by Facebook to decline our code interpretation. The interpretation that we was asking for, it basically says, this is what our attorney wrote, respectfully, we disagree with this assessment, and its name indicates Northwest Automotive Customs as a car restoration and customization business. It does not offer vehicle repair to the general public. And just continues to go on and lay out our case. To tell me that our businesses are not in compliance is absurd according to assignment. They have no idea what is going on. It's open if anybody wants to stop by and see this wrongness proven by and seen by my employees. We had, we've worked on industrial vehicles in there. Our building has been an restoration shop since 2005, 2006, and there's no question about that. It's the new, our new buildings behind us as a professional. That's in question. My fear is if I do a conditional use permit, am I going to be subject to the same thing that I just was with code interpretation? I didn't follow doing the CUP, but I do have the problem with the city taking my money and not following and not doing what they was asked. To me, that's just pure negligence, and there's malice and less base effects. I did it in front of this council how many times, complaining about the homeless situation, which I have to say, it's great, we haven't had one incident. So I think the 99 councilor sites is worth more than it should. So when we come to this, we have numerous businesses in the business park that should not be there. Space facts, does Carousel meet industrial zone? I don't want to bring it up, but you know, where's the equity? If I'm being forced to go and do this, then there should be enough equity in the business park that we don't have things that's in there that is not there. And that's pretty much all I have to say on this. I just wanted to bring it to council's attention before we do any more regenaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Gangl.
Good evening, thank you, appreciate the opportunity. I got a complaint to make. My neighbor got.
Which address?
Dale Gangl, 1386 Cottonwood Place. I got a complaint to make. My neighbor got up on Saturday night and let his dog out. The dog let him know right away that there's somebody in the yard. He called the cops. The guy's out there standing, out there threatening to burn down his house because his dog barked in. The cops won't come out. Why is that? He says, well, what do I got to do? Defend myself here, take care of the thing matters in my own hand? They said, wait, be careful, this line is recorded, you can't do that. What is this? We can't defend ourselves? I don't, I don't understand this. I want the cops called when I call. I want them out there. If they don't come, I will defend my house, my property, my family, myself, whatever it takes. I will stand up for myself. I want the cops to come out when they're called. This defunding the fleece crop, that ain't going to cut it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings, there are none. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes. Resolution ordinances. Resolution supporting Measure 20-340 in the May 16, 2023 election, report by counselors Greg Irvin and Mike Fleck.
Madam Mayor, I think we were going to move this item to after the sheriff came, so if we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Item B. Ordinance amending Section 18.04.050, expedited procedure of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code, staff report by city planner.
Good evening, thank you, mayor and council. Recently, staff identified a portion of Section 18.04.050 expedited procedure for annexation requiring two readings of the ordinance before the city council. The requirement for two readings of each ordinance was removed in 2014 when voters of the city of Cottage Grove approved Measure 20-227, which amended the charter of the city of Cottage Grove. Staff has prepared the attached draft ordinance, which would remove the two-reading requirement. With the adoption of this draft ordinance, the procedure for preparation and consideration of ordinances for expedited annexations will follow Section 16, ordinance adoption of the 2014 Charter of the City of Cottage Grove. It is recommended that the city council hold the first vote on the attached ordinance amending Section 18.04.050, expedited procedure of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code. This ordinance has not been available for more than one week and therefore cannot be adopted in one meeting.
Counselor.
Get the number.
Ordinance number?
Ordinance number 3172.
I move that the council adopt ordinance 3172 or hold its first vote on ordinance 3172 amending Section 18.04.050, the expedited procedure for the Cottage Grove Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Merideth.
Aye.
Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Sennett.
Aye.
Counselor Drier.
Aye.
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Youth representative.
Aye.
Mayor Solzhi.
Aye. Business from the city council. Chamber of Commerce report, staff report by city manager, Richard Myers.
The chamber executive director is here, Georgia Hassel, to give the annual report from the Chamber of Commerce.
Hi. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members, for letting me speak tonight. Can you hear me now? Okay. I have here a 2022 in review of the chamber, and we'll get started. Let's see. How long do I wait? Okay. Last year, we had 230 members. We have a 91% member retention rate and 31 new members in 2022. There we go. Okay, so this is a worldview. We have a ton of followers on Facebook. We have a broad reach of posts. We sent out Michael's 18 emails to our members directly. We sent out 52 weekly emails last year. We have 404 subscribers and open rate 47%. Actually, that's more like 52% now. Oh, because there's people who. Okay, there we go. We held a mayor and city councilor candidate forum, which was awesome. It was a packed house. We had over 250 attendees at our annual awards banquet. We had thousands of attendees at our Halloween Hoot Nanny, as you know, because we participated. It was fantastic. Three ribbon cuttings. We had a Christmas kickoff and 11 business after hours, averaging 35 to 40 attendees, which is really good. They're going very well. And that's up to 40 to 50 now, so next. Our visitor center is doing really well. The relocation is working. That is Skeeter the Clown. They had the circus with the Kiwanis last year, and she came in and we sold tickets for them. Our volunteers are Tara Sue Hugart, Penny Westling, Ann Crush, Linda Olson, Andrea Hummel, and Philip Gag. Maya Morgan is our intern. She comes to us through Elevate and Connected Lane County program. I just want to take a second to brag about her. She's fantastic. So she has actually moved on, and she works at Elcom now as of last week. Since she spent under a year with us and she got her GED, she got her driver's license, she started college, and secured a pretty sweet new job. So she was an asset while we had her, and we'll see who we get next. It's a great program. We modify our hours of operation at the tourist, at the visitor center seasonally. So this summer will be open Saturdays, right now will close Wednesdays. We have increased our volunteer coverage at the visitor center. We have doubled our business referrals, and we reprint and distribute the tourism brochures, like the Cover Bridge brochure, and all the brochures that the Historical Society creates, like the Historic Tour of the Northwest Neighborhood, those. Our focus in 2022 was partnership in tourism. We partner with the city, Travel Lane County, Oregon RAIN, SBDC through Lane Community College, Downtown Cottage Grove, KNND, the Settlemont Promenade. We've had lots of media spotlights, but I wanted to focus on this one. This is the airport ad that played for three months when Botswana was here. That was great. And that played at the airport for three months. That was, I think, June, July, and August of last year. Okay, and this is on the Travel Lane County visitors site. Cottage Grove was the 14th most visited page on the Travel Lane County's site for 2022. They did a wonderful job in putting together outreach for us during the pandemic and even afterwards. They're a wonderful partner to have. Concerts in the Park, that was fun. It's so nice, and they had all brand new bands last year. Not all brand new, yes, I'm returning.
Just a couple.
And just a couple.
We had some favorites.
Yes. And lots of people and families and everybody came to enjoy it. The Christmas kickoff. This year, we went back downtown, and the little cars that we had were. I guess we decorated them, and they brought Santa down into town. Santa, you know, followed the reindeer downtown. You can see one of our public work guys dressed up as reindeer there. Yeah. Now, the Shop Small campaign. We partnered with Harrison Parent Club. This is the second year in a row where they purchased. We had, they sold Chamber gift certificates to the parent club. Did you get that? Almost $4,000 worth of our Shop Small. The Shop Small season. Did you get that? Almost $4,000 dollars worth of our Shop Small. We did Shop Small Saturday, Shop Small season. We created the Shop Small passport. Partnered with KNND, the Settlemont Promenade. And 2022 was the World Athletic Campaign trips, and we hosted Botswana here. They were here just before they went to the games. They used our track at High School, and they were able to tour various parts of our community. It was just a lot of fun. You know, all community came out and welcomed them. We went to the racetrack, we went to the lake, we went, you know. I better set that in because Shawna's going to take credit for it. I want to make sure we're going to do this. Shawna did all of the work for that. Sorry, felt like I was going to fade for a second. You guys are so intimidating. More Botswanas see the farewell party they had, and they met with the, is that from South Valley Athletics? Those kids came down to meet them?
Yes.
This is the numbers from the candidates forum. We had two moderators. It was live stream. They were standing and hollering.
Excellent.
Yeah, Cameron had a good time. Oh, this is the symphony. That is when we had the tables down there. That's fantastic. So supporting community events is a focus of the chamber. We want to make sure that we help in any way we can. And sometimes we're allowed to help organize the food vendors for the symphony. So Oktoberfest was fun, and we're going to be doing that again, partnering with Downtown Cottage Grove on that again. And the Chop Art Contest was super fun. It really made Art Walk extra special that time. See, what we're up to now. We are focusing on getting heads in beds, and through that, there's a bowling tournament coming. It's five weekends long. There's 400 people, 100 teams of four-person teams coming. And we are partnering with the bowling and give incentives for those people to stay in Cottage Grove and shop in Cottage Grove and enjoy all of our awesome things that we have. Along with Grand Fondo, we do the same thing, with a show your bib sort of promotion. And we are almost completed with planning the Concerts in the Park. So that band was a big one.
You may want to explain what you mean by heads in beds to the audience.
So when people come and stay at our hotels, we get a percentage of the room tax that they pay when they stay there as a city. And so we really want people to stay here. We like that money. This is what we have coming up. We have Business After Hours is the third Thursday of each month. We have Breakfast Club, which is every other month at 8:00 a.m. at Postwork Brewing. And that is either the second Thursday or the third Thursday of the month, whichever works out best for their employees. Concerts in the Park, June 14 through August 30. And I want to invite you all to come down to the chamber office anytime and visit me. Alex, I know I invited you, but we never followed through with the email. So come on down and visit and see all of the other things that we have going on. Right now, the hours are Monday and Tuesday, 10 to 5, and Thursday and Friday, 10 to 5. Next quarter, they will change again, though. So this is our lovely board of directors. They're fantastic and supportive, and they are very much the definition of a working board. Cameron can verify that. I rely on him a lot. That is the 2023 Newcomers and Visitors Guide, which is the new directory, chamber directory. And that is it. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Merideth.
What is the percentage of businesses in Cottage Grove that are members? Do you know?
Well, I do not know. We have 230 members, but I don't know the total number of businesses in Cottage Grove. So I think I can get that list from Shawna, though, and we can do the math, and I can get back to you.
Kind of a funny thing with that is there's, in Cottage Grove, we've never had a business license, and so actually Cottage Grove does not actually know, technically, a finite number.
It's always a little bit of a guess, right?
Counselor Merideth.
I believe there's a ribbon cutting this week.
There sure is. There's a ribbon cutting Wednesday at noon for the senior center. There's also Breakfast Club Thursday. 8 o'clock. And the awards banquet on Saturday night.
I just wanted to say it's amazing to work with you and watch not just you, but the community come together and support our local businesses. It's amazing to be a part of that team. It's amazing to watch everything we do, thinking for all of you. Georgia, you're doing a great job. We're, this town is very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Shawna, for filling in there for a second.
Thanks, Shawna. Okay, item B. Budget committee appointment, staff report by finance director, Roberta Liggins.
Good evening, mayor and council. In order to facilitate the budget committee selection process, the council appointed a subcommittee to conduct interviews and make recommendations. That interview committee met on Monday, April 3. There are five vacancies that exist on the budget committee with three expiring terms, the election of Dana Merideth to the city council, and the resignation of Dawn Rust. Six applications for the open positions were received. Those committee applications were Charlene Sales, Dennis Prochu, Linda Yellen, Gary Manley, Deborah McLean, and Charles McLean. The committee believed that all of the applicants that applied had great merit and were suitable to fill those open positions. Sadly, there were only five open. The committee, by consensus, are recommending the following appointments. Charles McLean to the unexpired term of Dana Merideth, expiring 12/31/23. Linda Yellen to the unexpired term of Dawn Rust, to expire 12/31/23. Reappointment of Gary Manley for a three-year term, to expire 12/31/25. Dennis Prochu and Charlene Sales to a three-year term, to expire 12/31/25. So this is staff's recommendation to consider making the appointments to the budget committee as recommended by the city.
Counselor Fleck.
Yes, I would just love to say thank you so much. It's wonderful when we actually have more applicants than openings. That is not always the case. And so we really appreciate folks being willing to step up and certainly encourage, you know, anybody who wasn't appointed to, you know, keep at it, because there will be openings again in the future. And so with that, I will move that we, and I'm not going to read this, appoint the recommended members to the recommended terms in the memorandum.
Second. Moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unless you pass. Thank you. Item C. Lane County Public Safety Levy Presentation, staff report by city manager, Richard Myers.
This evening, we have Sheriff Harold here to give a brief presentation about the Lane County Public Safety Levy. It was requested that we do that, and after that, we've moved the resolution item after that, so.
Thank you very much, mayor and councilors. I really appreciate the opportunity to get to come down and visit with you about this important topic. I'll jump right into a presentation and would love to have some question and answer time. My name is Cliff Harold. I'm the sheriff here in Lane County for just shy of four years, coming up on four years. Been a part of the sheriff's office for over 30 years, started as a cadet when I was going to high school up at Crestwood High, and actually had the privilege of working next door from '92 to '95 as a dispatcher down here at Cox School PD, till I turned 21 and got hired as a deputy. I've had the privilege of doing just about every assignment in our operation, and it's my honor to be the sheriff of Lane County. The reason we're here today is to talk about the need to renew the public safety levy and a little bit about why that came about in the first place. It's probably not a surprise to you all, but Lane County historically, decades ago, funded a robust county government service on timber receipts. 54% of the county is federal forest land, and the county was receiving a significant portion of the proceeds when timber was logged off from the federal forest land. That went away some time ago and was initially replaced by revenue from the federal government. So the federal government recognized that a lot of local governments were struggling once the logging was restricted. And so they started sending payments called Secure Rural Schools payments. And initially, they were sending tens of millions. And as they continued to debate that in Congress every time they passed a budget bill, eventually, there was a significant reduction in those payments. And that impacted Lane County government significantly. From '08 to '12, the entire county government was impacted. But within the sheriff's office, we cut 200 positions out of the Lane County Sheriff's Office, and we laid off 100 actual employees. Tom Turner was the sheriff in 2012, and in response to this crisis, he went out and had a really robust conversation with the community. Lane County had attempted to pass public safety measures 12 or 13 times prior to this, and none of them had passed. Tom went out and had a bunch of conversations with the community and then came back and proposed a levy based on what he heard from the community. And what he heard from the community as far as what they wanted in service and what they would support. And what he heard from the community as far as what they wanted in service and what they would support. So the levy in 2013 promised that it would provide 255 beds in the Lane County Jail, that it would provide eight detention beds in youth services and eight treatment beds in youth services. And it promised an annual audit conducted by an external auditor that would be presented to the Board of County Commissioners and the elected sheriff in a public session annually, so the voters would know that in fact the funds were being used the way they were proven to be. And so that levy proceeded in 2013 and passed. Fifty-four percent of the voters approved that levy. Prior to the passage of the levy, because of the reduction in staff, I'm out of order in my slides. This slide just shows you that 50% of the detention beds in youth services are funded with the levy and over 50% of the treatment beds are funded with the levy. The levy funds 35% of youth services' operational budget currently. I'm missing a slide, so let me see if I can find it. There we go. Prior to the levy passing, we were having to have forced releases from the Lane County Jail. As you can see here, in 2012, over 4,000 forced releases. We also call those capacity-based releases, or because we love our acronyms, we like to call them CBRs. The difference between a capacity-based release and a typical pretrial release? The courts conduct pretrial release every day. It's a structured release. The court says, we're going to release you pretrial. We want you to call in once a week to confirm that you're staying engaged with the system. Or we want you to physically show up in the pretrial release office once a week to demonstrate that you're going to stay engaged with the system. Or it might be a third-party release where somebody comes and signs a piece of paper that says, I'm going to make sure Joe makes it to court. All of those structured releases are conducted by the court. It's really not up to the sheriff. It's up to the courts. A forced release is when the courts have decided someone should stay in custody, but we don't have room, so we are forced to release them. And a forced release doesn't have any of the connectivity that I described when there's a structured release from the courts. So we were conducting CBRs on a regular basis prior to the levy passing. In addition, or in particular, I'll point out, the Measure 11 and pretrial felony offenses that were being forced to release. Some folks may not remember Measure 11 was in the mid-'90s. It was a citizen's petition for mandatory minimum sentencing for the most violent of felonies within the state law system. So we actually have a slide to remind us what Measure 11 crimes were. Assault wanted to, anything in the murder realm, robbery, rape, sex abuse, et cetera, were all Measure 11 crimes. You can see in the chart there how many Measure 11s we've had in the Lane County Jail on the calendar year. Prior to the levy passing in '13, we were forced to release multiple Measure 11 and serious violent felony offenders, which is actually contrary to statute. By statute, the sheriff's supposed to retain those folks unless they've been released by the court. But again, due to lack of space, we were forced to do that. Once the levy passed in 2013, we have not capacity-based released a single Measure 11 or violent felony offender, and that remains true today. This slide demonstrates what the levy means to our overall corrections budget. It's 52% of our overall corrections budget. That overall budget is an umbrella. That includes every aspect of corrections to include the people that drive folks from the jail to the circuit courthouse and back. It includes sheriff's work crew, which you might drive by and see them out cleaning up trash along the side of the road. It includes our community service, where we have a deputy that coordinates with nonprofit organizations so that people can serve their local jail sentence by working at a nonprofit. When Tom had the conversation with the community about the levy, it was very focused, the community wanted jail beds, because that's what they didn't have. And so we don't spend levy dollars on any of those things that I just described, sheriff's work crew, community service. The levy is very specifically used to fund the jail beds. So while it's 52% of our overall corrections division budget, it's 78% of the jail beds that are available in the Lane County Jail. A little bit about our wellness program, which is to say that I think it's no surprise to anybody that we have a mental health crisis in our community, in our state, and frankly, in our country. The way that mental health resources have been funded nationally has changed significantly in the last decades. And one of the things that we've recognized at the Lane County Jail is that our jail population has changed. A lot of the folks that we find in our system now are caught up and are struggling with a mental health crisis oftentimes. And then also substance abuse disorder, which oftentimes goes hand in hand with mental health struggles. So one of the things that we've done in our jail is that we really changed the way we were looking at some of the folks in our population. By that, I mean a very traditional corrections approach is that if your behavior is bad, you stay locked in your cell longer. And if your behavior gets better, then we reward that by bringing you out of your cell more often and giving you more access to privileges, reading the paper or books or using the phone. One of the things that we did a few years ago is we made some specific investments in mental health. We have five mental health specialists working in the Lane County Jail, which is more than any other county jail in the state. And we've set up a program where we have mental health specialists, medical specialists, and deputy sheriffs who get together, look specifically at who is in the jail today, and we identify folks who possibly could benefit by being involved in some programming with the mental health specialists. So rather than saying, as soon as that person's behavior improves, we'll plug them into the program, we're saying, I wonder if we plug them into the program, if their behavior will improve. And it was a pretty significant shift for our staff, because as I said, that's not a traditional corrections approach. But what we can say absolutely anecdotally is that we are experiencing better behavior because of this program. Some of the deputies that have been working in the jail for 20 years when we started to make this change were pretty resistant. One of the things I really enjoy now is taking folks on a jail tour and having those same staff who will talk about this program and say, you would not believe who volunteered to lead group the other day. And they'll share a name with me that most of us recognize because that person's been in and out of our custody for a long time. And we recognize it because historically, they were engaging in staff confrontation, staff assaults, and assaults against other folks that are in custody. And by getting them engaged in group sessions and keeping them engaged in some programming, we're experiencing much better behavior. I mentioned it's really not up to the sheriff who's in custody. It's up to the courts, but it is up to the sheriff and the sheriff's staff how we take care of the people that are in our custody. So I'm proud of this program. We started with just a few beds. It's now available to 56 beds on the third floor of our building. We also have a program for women out in the annex, which is where women are housed. Our jail commander went and presented on this program in Denver to a national conference. And we've really had some national interest in what we're doing. People calling to find out how we got the program started. And our jail commander was recognized as Jail Commander of the Year last year, largely in part because of that program. I always like to try and end on something positive. This is what is referred to in slang as a kite. Its formal name is an inmate request form. But folks who are in custody can write them for all kinds of things. They can write an I R F, we love our acronyms, to the volunteer and ask for reading glasses. They can write one and ask to speak to a specific deputy. Occasionally, they write them to the sheriff. And I really enjoy getting ones like this one. This one was three weeks ago, where an individual in our custody is saying, thank you to the staff for your professionalism and work each one of you do in your capacity here within the jail. The job you each face on a daily basis is thankless, yet I see a common thread in each of you, a desire to help others. This is a quality of high esteem. May each of you find the feeling inside of your hearts that you're making the world a better place. This is my last visit as a client. I love to get notes like that. I'm super proud of the folks that work in the jail. I'm very, very proud of our office. But to have somebody who is in our custody send me a note over to commend the staff that's providing for their care while they're in custody, I always super enjoy reading that. One other quick thing that I want to make sure and share with you, there is a little bit of a misperception about who's in custody at the Lane County Jail. There is some messaging out there right now that would try to let folks think that the only folks who are in the Lane County Jail are those folks who are unhoused and struggling with their mental health. And so I get an email every day at 11:00 a.m. that tells me who's in custody. And so I'm going to share with you, not an entire list, but today at 11:00 a.m., we had in custody 16 people on murder charges. We had 72 people in custody for Measure 11s. Reminder, Measure 11, those are the major violent assaults, rape one, sex abuse one, assault one and two, robbery one, et cetera. We had 38 people in custody for violent felonies outside of Measure 11. So as an example, a rape one would be in the Measure 11 category. An attempted rape one would be a violent felony, not in the Measure 11 category. We had 32 people in custody for violent misdemeanors. I didn't go through those case by case, but I can almost guarantee you that all of those are domestic violence assault. Domestic violence assault typically starts as a misdemeanor, and then there's a number of factors which can push it up into the felony category. And then we had 39 folks in custody on sentences. A lot of times, people think that that building's full of folks serving sentences. The reality is, most folks, as they go through their court process, if they get sentenced on felony crimes, we're transporting them to the prison system, generally speaking. They don't stay in our custody. But for a low-level felony, a first-time property crime offender, perhaps, or misdemeanor crimes, they might be sentenced to local jail time. So that might look like a 20-day jail sentence, victim restitution, and court probation. For the longest time, Lane County has had to prioritize our limited jail beds. And so we have these alternative programs like Sheriff's Work Crew. And we try not to use jail beds in the case of a 20-day jail sentence. 25 years ago, if somebody was in the courtroom and the judge sentenced them to 20 days in jail, he would summon a deputy who would come and take that person directly to jail. Now, our circuit court judge most likely, there are exceptions, most likely says, okay, I'm going to sentence you to 20 days in jail. Within the next three days, you need to report over to the Lane County Jail at the Defendant Offender Management Center. They show up, they check in at the front counter. We have an interview with them. Do you have a job? Are you working? Do you have these connections to the community? Do you want to serve your sentence working in Sheriff's Work Crew? You have a 20-day sentence. Do you want to work 20 days in a row? Do you want to work two days a week? Can you only work one week out of the month? And we schedule them to serve their jail sentence. Or they might qualify for community service. Or they might have a physical limitation which says they can't do Sheriff's Work Crew, but they would otherwise be eligible. And so we have a sit-in program. They show up at the same time as the Sheriff's Work Crew folks. When the crew goes out, they sit over at our Defendant Offender Management Center. And then when the crew comes in at the end of the day, they are released and get credit for the day, just like the crew. So we really, we're very strategic and prioritize who we actually occupy a jail bed with. The 39 folks who are serving their sentence in the jail today at 11: most likely had four or five chances at an alternative program to serve their sentence, and they weren't following through. They weren't following up on their commitment. And so our staff decided, okay, we're going to go ahead and help you get this sentence served so that you're not carrying that around over your head and have you in there. So that's not an exhaustive list. That's who was in the jail today at 11. I do want to point out that the levy first passed in 2013. It was 55 cents per thousand, 50 cents for the adult jail, and 5 cents for youth. Passed in '13 at 54% of the vote. In 2017, the renewal passed by almost 73% of the vote, and it stayed at 55 cents per thousand, 50 cents for adults, 5 cents for youth. The renewal request that's on your May ballot is 55 cents per thousand, 50 cents for adults, 5 cents for youth. It's not an increase in the current tax that you're paying. What we're asking is that the voters of the county agree to continue to pay that for this, what I believe to be a real priority service that government is supposed to provide. You know, we have 36 counties in the state. Every county is required to have a sheriff. Every county is required to operate a jail. And frankly, if the jail piece is lacking, the rest of the public safety system doesn't function well. With that, I feel like I've taken up quite a bit of time, so I'm going to pause and see if I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Urban.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for putting the work in to, you know, support this levy so that you can provide these services. I know it's a lot of presentations, a lot of traveling, but you're doing that on behalf of all of us, so thank you for that. I want to gain some understanding about how the jail beds are used in terms of other municipalities. Can you give kind of a breakdown of how that works with cities like ours and other jurisdictions?
Yeah, and one of the numbers I didn't read to you is that we have one person in custody on a municipal charge that's not the city of Eugene. At 11, we did. We do rent 15 beds to the Eugene Municipal Court. That's not included in that 367 number, so I carved the 15 beds out because those really are Eugene's jail beds. The Eugene Municipal Judges decide who occupies those 15 beds. They give people a score. And so when they get over 15, we release whoever has the lowest score according to the municipal judges. Other municipalities certainly can lodge folks in our jail. Now, all municipalities have to lodge people in our jail if it's a felony charge. Municipal courts are not allowed to hear felonies. Felonies are required to go through the circuit court, and the county jail is required to house people that are in the circuit court system. Municipal jails are not allowed to. Similarly, there are some misdemeanors, for example, domestic violence. Municipal courts don't care domestic violence cases. Those go through the DA's office, circuit court. They have to be at the county jail. So we do have folks that are lodged at the county jail from municipal courts, including this one. In fact, it was pre-COVID now, so it's been a little while. But myself and the jail commander came down and had a meeting with Cottage Grove Municipal Judge and talked a little bit about the way our services are available. We always like to encourage municipal courts to take advantage of our alternative programming. So if the municipal court has a person that they want to serve a sentence, we'd love for them to take advantage of Sheriff's Work Crew and those sorts of things. And so that was part of that conversation. When we are at capacity and have to do forced releases, municipal court offenders are released prior to us getting into the circuit court offenders. And then those releases, those forced releases, are done by score. Everybody who comes into our custody is interviewed by pretrial services officers. Those folks are not employees of the sheriff. They're employees of the state court system. It's actually pretty unique in Lane County. We've had it for a couple of decades. The state legislature enacted Senate Bill 48 last year. They're continuing to work on some pretrial legislation. And the state would like to see the rest of the counties have a system like ours, where state court release officers are working in the jail. Because they are working in the jail to make release decisions with the delegated authority of a judge, I specifically don't have that authority. In other counties that don't have court release officers in their jail, the sheriff oftentimes has delegated authority from the judge to make release decisions. So as I was saying, folks that get booked in, they have an interview process. We go through a risk assessment tool, which we periodically have validated at the U of O. And so everyone who is booked in has a score. And when it's time for us to do forced releases because we're out of room, we release the lowest score.
This is a quick follow-up to that. Is the, where is the release location? Is it just out the front door?
Counselor Sennett.
Thank you. I was encouraged by the shift in focus with regard to mental health and what sounds like it's paying dividends with regard to behaviors in the jail. I wondered, have you seen or could you envision it paying dividends beyond the jail itself? You know, is it really changing lives? Or could we maybe be reducing recidivism by changing the way we look at mental health in jail?
Yeah, we would hope to. Certainly, the programming that they're receiving are some skill building that maybe most of us in the room have already accomplished, conflict avoidance, conflict resolution programming. I don't have any data to prove. We hope that we're giving them skills to avoid coming back. I don't have any data to prove that we are. One of the struggles we find is that oftentimes, particularly with this program, we're bringing people into custody after they've been in custody for a little while, which typically then means that they're not using their substance of choice. They're oftentimes stabilized. And then their criminal charges maybe go away. And they can't be in jail if they don't have criminal charges, no matter how well they're doing in the program. So in addition to the five mental health specialists, we also reallocated some of our own staff. And we have two surgeons whose full-time job is to take a look at the mental health population in our jail. One does a lot of coordinating with fitness-to-proceed evaluations and knowing that somebody's coming back to us from the state hospital and making a plan for how they come in. And then we also try to do some release planning. So we have somebody that's been in our custody. They're doing well in the wellness program. The courts dropped their charges. They're going to be released. And so we call around and try to find someplace that can take them, that will continue to provide a structured environment so that they can continue to make good headway. Unfortunately, nine times out of 10, we can't find a spot. And oftentimes, that means the person is released out the front door. They go back to wherever their clothes are stored, which is usually surrounded by negative behaviors or negative habits. And then they oftentimes then self-medicate with illegal drugs, and we see them again. So that's the cycle we see more often than not. Occasionally, we have a win where we can find a spot. We all actually really celebrated this one particular individual. We drove them, when they were released from our custody, to a treatment facility that was willing to take them, actually in North Central Oregon. And we were all super excited that we actually found a spot for them. And we didn't see them again for a number of months instead of a number of days, which is more typical. But unfortunately, eventually, we did see them again, and they were back in their decompensated state. So not real optimistic news on that. The reality is, and I won't go on my rant, but, you know, the state government is not properly funding mental health services, in my opinion. State government's required to provide Oregon State Hospital, and I think they're failing our community. And I would love for the legislature to decide that that was a priority for our state funds. Until we have better resources there, we're going to continue to do the best we can while they're in our state. they're in our custody.
And you said the levy funds 78% of that?
Yeah, so, and how we do that allocation, 78% of the jail beds are levy-funded. So any of our costs that are related to who's in custody, we pay 78% of the bill with levy funds. So our mental health contract providers, 78% of that bill gets paid with levy, 78% of our food costs levy, 78% of our medical bill levy.
Thank you.
Counselor Mary Day?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome back, Sheriff Harrell. I wanted to know, is it still available to take the jail tour, and what times that would be available?
Thank you so much for asking, and we have passed out some flyers, and we'll make sure that there are some available for you all. It has a website on it, which you can go and sign up for a jail tour. I'd love for everybody to come take a look at your Lane County Jail. We're doing them Wednesday nights and Saturday mornings. We do ask folks to sign up so that we can make sure that we have enough staff on hand to handle however large of a group is going to come. But frankly, if a Wednesday night or Saturday morning doesn't work for you, or if this council decided to do a work session and wanted to come see the jail, I'd be happy to facilitate scheduling for anybody. So I was going to try to say that website off the top of my head, but I might get it wrong. We'll get you a flyer, and you can sign up for a jail tour.
And then you'll be back in Cottage Grove later in April as well?
At the high school? Yes, we will. We are at Cottage Grove High doing an information session. This is my third one of these today. So one of the things, early on, we had some polling that told us that it's been 10 years since we were doing all these forced releases. And the polling said that the community has forgotten what that looked like. And the polling said, Sheriff, if you think you can just sit back and see this thing get renewed, you're wrong. But if you do a robust information campaign, then you can get it done. And so I told my PO to schedule me for as many possible opportunities, and he heard me. So I've been doing a lot of them, six or seven a week the last couple of weeks, but I really appreciate the opportunity to get the word out, so thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Counsel Irvin?
You touched on the mental health issue, and since we had a chance to talk about this a little bit today, but how would you characterize the shortcomings of the state? Is it unavailable beds? We talked about the actual assessment part of it. What, if anything, could be done on the local level, say there was funding, to clear the bottleneck to some degree?
Yeah, that's a great question. So fitness-to-proceed evaluations in particular, you know, a cornerstone of American jurisprudence, if you're not capable of participating in your own defense, then you're not trying. And so when folks get arrested and they have their first court appearance, the judge, the attorneys, they might all agree, you know, we're not sure that this individual is capable of participating in their own defense. So the judge will order a fitness-to-proceed evaluation. By statute, that's supposed to happen in seven days, and that order is an order to the sheriff to transport them to the state hospital for that evaluation. Unfortunately, what happens in reality is we call the state hospital and say, we have this order, and the state hospital says, as soon as we can see you is four months. And so folks are sitting in jail cells across the state, not just, you might think just in the valley along the I-5 corridor, but my friends and colleagues in the eastern part of the state have the same frustration, and they're much smaller jails. Folks are sitting in a jail cell waiting for that fitness-to-proceed evaluation. So there's actually been a ton of court work gone into this, both in state court and federal court, where the state has been sued for not accomplishing what they're supposed to with respect to those fitness-to-proceed evaluations. One of the things that we're doing internally is if we can utilize technology for that evaluation, then we will do so. So as an example, if someone's capable of participating in a sort of a Zoom sort of atmosphere, we might use an evaluator who's sitting in an office in Florida, because they can do it sooner than the state hospital will let us transport someone up there. And if there was a local resource that was funded that could do those evaluations and show up at the Lane County Jail, we'd be happy to facilitate a meeting space where they could do those in person. That does happen in some of the metro areas where evaluators go to the jail. But ultimately, we've got to have better capacity at the state hospital. As a result of that federal case, which was called the Mossman Decision, if anybody wants to Google it, the federal court said, hey, state hospital, you've got this backlog from every county of people that are supposed to come up here for a fitness-to-proceed evaluation, and you're not getting that done. So we're going to order you to get the people who are in the state hospital out so that you can bring the waiting list in. But unfortunately, the reality of that is it just really resets the whole merry-go-round, so to speak. The folks that are at the state hospital, they're not done being treated. That's why the state hospital hasn't sent them back. But as a result of this court order, they come back, they are not fit to proceed, their criminal charges go away, they go out the front door of the jail, and then they end up getting back on the waiting list to go up for their next fitness-to-proceed. So that part of the system is super broken. There's got to be greater capacity at the state level to do those. And maybe just a quick example about that. In fall of 2020, we had a utility crew that was trenching on Butler Road outside of El Mar, in West Lane County. And an individual went out, and he thought that they were installing Russian spyware, and he told them if they didn't stop, he was going to go get his gun and shoot them. So they went down the road, and they were obviously alarmed by that. They went down the road, they called us and said, we're supposed to be trenching out there. I think they were installing broadband. But this individual threatened us. So deputies go out there, knock on the door to try and figure out what the resolution is. And this individual started shooting at them with an AK-47, which, by the way, goes through doors. And over the course of the next two and a half hours, he fired hundreds of rounds. We had additional folks respond. Fortunately, we have some vehicles that are armor through the 1033 program from the military, retired stuff in the military. And ultimately, this individual came out and was surrendered, and no one was injured, which is a miracle. He was arrested for attempted assault, one. He went to the state hospital for a fitness-to-proceed. They kept him because they were trying to get him to the point of being able to participate. The Mossman Decision through federal court said he needs to be out so that the next person can come up. So he came back to Lane County, he went in front of a judge, he was found unfit to proceed, criminal charges are dropped, and he went out the door. So there used to be a way where that person could be civilly committed because of the clear danger to self and others, but the bar for civil commitment has gotten so high in Oregon that instead, you know, when everybody in this room could see that somebody's not capable of making good decisions for themselves, yet we insist that they have the right to be ill, which sort of relegates them to living in the streets, self-medicating with illegal drugs. So my personal opinion, there's got to be a balance there. I personally, as a deputy, involved with an individual that was consistently causing alarm. And I remember just pleading with the judge to civilly commit this man, because I knew, we were having at least two to three contacts within a week, and I knew that at some point it was getting into a use of deadly force. And the judge at the time did commit him. The judge was retiring. The judge knew that his decision would get overturned, and it did. But the judge did it anyway because it was the best thing for that person. Sorry, rabbit-trailed a little bit. Thank you for the question.
Anyone else? We really appreciate all the information that you brought us tonight. It was very insightful, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity.
And with that, we will go back to resolution supporting Measure 20-340 in the May of 16, 2023 election. Report by Counselor Greg Irvin and Mike Fleck.
So I'll go ahead and start, and so I kind of didn't want to take any of the thunder before, Sheriff, but thank you so much for coming. I have been in this seat since we were doing those capacity releases, and it was a disaster. And I will tell you that in my estimation, this has been one of the best, you know, levies that I've seen in the county. It came in under budget in that first term and has maintained that budget and kept these, you know, violent offenders off the streets. And so with that, Counselor Irvin and I threw together, basically, we took the flyer from the county, which has been vetted, and we put it into resolution form. Because it's on the ballot, our staff can't do that, so that's why we undertook doing that ourselves. And we offer it with tremendous support. I hope to pass a resolution to send the signal to the voters that, gosh, this is just a really, really good idea, and we support it 100%.
Resolution number?
Resolution number 2094.
So I move that we adopt Resolution 2094.
Second. While the recorder, please call the roll. Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Drier?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Youth representative? Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Mary Day?
Aye.
Mayor Solsky?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ordinance. Resolution, sorry. Okay. All right. Item D, cancellation of April 24, 2023 City Council Meeting Staff Report by the City Manager.
The League of Oregon Cities is holding their annual spring conference on the 25th and 26th of April, and that's starting on Tuesday morning at 8:00 a.m. in Seaside. We have four counselors and three counselors and the mayor that are going to be going to that, and so a majority of the council will be leaving probably on Monday evening rather than trying to leave at 4:00 in the morning to go to the conference. So as a result of that, we've recommended that they cancel that meeting on the 24th.
Counselor Fleck?
Madam Mayor, I move that we cancel, excuse me, the April 24, 2023 City Council meeting.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Counselor Mary Day?
I'm not sure if it's a clarifying question or point of order. Will the agenda session on the preceding Friday also be canceled?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Item E, concerns from council. Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the council so much for supporting my trip to Washington, DC. I came to you guys in December, and you graciously allowed me to fly to the National League of Cities, City Congressional Conference in Washington, DC, where there were tons of general sessions and classes. And then we had the opportunity to speak with federal legislation senators and congress representatives. So I just wanted to give a brief summary. I think I provided you all and the public with some documents. Let me try to bury them. Over here. Sorry, hang on. Sorry. Here, there. Okay. So just some highlights from the trip. You could read it in the documents, but some things I wanted to touch on. So the president of the National League of Cities, her name is Victoria Woodard, she is Tacoma, Washington's mayor. She goes around saying, good jobs build good cities. Her slogan for 2023 is people plus partnerships equal possibilities. So the CEO of the National League of Conferences, Clarence Anthony, says that if it's not documented, then it didn't happen, so make sure that we're documenting everything that we're doing and creating a paper trail for everything that we're doing. Clarence also mentioned there's a growing violence nationwide, which is being fueled by misperceptions. They talked about rail safety. There's over 140,000 miles of track in the United States. This needs to take priority. However, the rail issue cannot be fixed at a local level because it involves interstate commerce, so this needs to be enacted Congress. They talked about broadband. There was a poll that was done. The number one reason for lack of broadband access was affordability, and those who responded to the affordability said that 98% of them said they wanted municipalities to take care of this. So Director of the White House Office of Management and Budget, Shalonda Young, said budgets are all about values. You can tell a lot about a community when you read the budget, so we'll keep this in mind as we go into our budget season. So Vince Williams is the past president of the National League of Cities. He says we need to work together and help get access to treatment, to reduce the access to drugs. We need to teach our children one pill will kill. Somebody proclaimed that fentanyl is a weapon of mass destruction, which I thought was really profound. Tom Villisack, the U.S. Secretary of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, wants to elevate the whip program. He says 40% of those who are eligible do not use it. Marcia Fudge, Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, talked about how the smaller communities need resources. Senior citizens are the biggest group becoming homeless because of their fixed income. There was a wonderful saying, I believe it was from Jim McGovern, a representative from the 2nd District in Massachusetts, and he says, we're experiencing division in America fueled by the media. His wish is that we move too fast to hate, but we slow down long enough to love. And there were, anyway, quite a few other statements in there, which is really exciting. One of the most exciting parts was talking with some of our representatives. We met with Representative Val Foyle from District 4, Senator Ron Wyden, Representative Cliff Benz from District 2, Representative Lori Chavez de Reimer from District 5, and Senator Jeff Merkley. I had the pleasure of talking about infrastructure in FEMA and how that related to our local, to us here in Cottage Grove for infrastructure. I talked about how we have 40 miles of roadway, and yet we need to be able to pay for it. We'd like to get some funding. As the sheriff was stating earlier, when the timber industry took a nosedive in Cottage Grove, it was harder to have money here in Cottage Grove. So we need to figure out a way to help with our infrastructure. And then FEMA, I asked for redistricting on the floodplains map. Out of 2,500, I believe was the number of houses we have in Cottage Grove proper, over 800 of them are affected by our new floodplain maps, which causes an increase in flood insurance. So I took that to our federal folks and said, we need to rethink this. This really affects our little town, and I hope that they listen. So with that, you're welcome to read everything. I did take a tour of the White House, and so there's some fun key points. I took pictures of some key cards that they had there. So I didn't take notes, but it was really fun going through it, so I don't want to take you guys on that adventure with me. So with that, thank you so much for sending me. I would encourage, I know Counselor Fleck and Counselor Irvin, you guys have been to Washington, DC. I would encourage you to send one of you to go once. It's amazing. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And on Chamber Commerce side of things, I hope everybody here and in the public is able to attend the annual awards banquet on Saturday. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Drier?
Mayor, council, I need to clarify. At the last meeting, I misspoke in my counselor comments. So to clarify, the mobile crisis response services are being contracted by Lane County, not by South Lane Mental Health.
Anyone else? Counselor Mary Day?
Yes, on Saturday at the Armory, there was the youth celebration, and it was very well-attended. Youth from all aspects of Cottage Grove. We had a number of young skater, bike riders that had a really fine interplay of showing good sportsmanship and cooperation there, and it was a very positive thing. At some point in the night, another group of perhaps youth or older Cottage Grovers took to spray cans and decorated our town. It seemed to be pretty indiscriminate. A number of businesses were hit, even this and that shop, so I couldn't see any pattern to it. But I think that it's clear that we need to lead our youth in a positive direction, and is doing that is through youth programs, particularly recreation, working towards a recreation improvement so that kids can use the energy in a positive way and learn to... and learn to interact for the good of each other and our community. So it was both a joy and a sorrow that passed as Easter morning arose. Anyway, heads off to all the positive kids that came to the Armory.
Counselor?
Yeah, interestingly, that's a good segue to the thoughts I want to kind of express. I think it just comes down to recognition that there is room for improvement in leadership in the city, and I think it starts with us as a council. Mentioned on Friday, I've been collecting my thoughts on where accountability lies when there's disorder in the house. And it comes down to, to me, I've been landing on the culture, the culture that we set as a council. And that comes with how, what kind of goals and objectives that we set, how we require them to be, you know, addressed and met, and what kind of information that we get back to check on that, and how we communicate that back out to our community. And that's an example to be set for the youth. You know, I think there's a lot of signatures, a lot of tells of disorder. Not to discount all of the good markers of real unity and community building that exists, that we have. So my kind of takeaway is to distill down is that I hope as we approach reviewing and looking at and setting our new goals and objectives, that we take stock of what is working and we make a concerted effort to bolster where we've been lacking. You know, I just also want to acknowledge that a time like this, there's a lot of tension. There's a lot of finger pointing. There's a lot of stuff going on. And I think the way through it is good leadership and keeping a level head, looking at the data, looking at facts, hearing all sides. So I just want to share that that's, it's been impressing on me pretty heavily for quite some time. And I look forward to what can come out of this as we work together as a council to just continue to make this a better place to live and ensure as much peace as we can, right? And as much as it depends on us that we would live at peace with each other. I do also want to share an update from the Lane Economic Committee. So we did have a presentation from the sheriff. The other part of that was a presentation we'd requested from the regional economist. Economist kind of, I guess, assigned, I'm not sure how that works exactly, to Douglas and Lane Counties, gave an update. Thank you, Mindy, for getting that out with that last minute request. There's a couple of things that I was keen to listen to as it relates to the city of Cottage Grove. And those were the things that were impacting our housing and factors impacting that. So I think you'll find them towards the back of the presentation. Interesting thing of note, I think, was the fact that the in, I forget the word exactly, the ingrowing or incoming populations have really dropped off into Oregon. So that would be on the demand side of housing and a lot of factors. And we started to see somewhat of either a leveling off or a decrease. So bearing that in mind when it comes to, that's one of the pressures on housing. And then another one that was coming up that wasn't addressed in this, but I intend to follow up on, is a real analysis of the impact of the actual land use goals for the state of Oregon and how that affects this region. I did send an email to the economist to that end. And he said that was in his area of expertise, but referred me to another department. So hope to follow up on that. I mentioned all that just because I know that we're discussing measures that we can take here in Cottage Grove to impact affordability. And I know we have to balance that with the livability of this town and what makes it, you know, what makes us want to be here. So I hope to have those discussions as well incorporated just so that we can watch what's happening and once again gather more data from the experts that are putting it together to make good decisions. And kind of to that end, would like to see if I can gather kind of consensus of investigating what it would take to bring in that piece, that missing bottleneck piece. And the sheriff was mentioning it in the conversations with our local judge and conversations with some community members who actually had served in that role before retirement, that this assessment of a fitness to proceed keeps coming up. I don't know exactly what's downstream, so I wouldn't say that that's like the fix-all. But like more presentation, more understanding on what we could do. Some brainstorming ideas where if, I mean, we have governmental, intergovernmental agreements of sharing resources. What if we could get someone that would readily, you know, fit that seven-day model? And I think he might have taken off. He said someone else in his office had more of the information about what the demand is, like how many cases are actually coming, how many are backlog. But I'd love to direct staff to maybe find people that are in the know on that and present it to us. And if we can do something innovative to address this ahead of the state, maybe it could be a model. So I don't know what possibilities will come, but we owe it to the people of Cottage Grove to address this. I think it might be one of those sources of common problems that get conflated into other issues. So that would be my recommendation. I think of a little bit of that.
Anyone else?
Well, I too woke up to the graffiti, and it was very disheartening. A lot of the historical buildings got it. And it was nice to see community members out there coming together to help others try to remove it. I do know that a lot of the downtown does have cameras. And I know there is some footage out there. And I was happy that the police were out taking pictures and logging it and so that we can hopefully find the people that did this and let them know that this won't be tolerated in our city. And also, if, I also want to encourage anyone that lives in the downtown. If you hear any noise at night, look out, call it in. And, you know, because they had to have been out there for quite a while doing this and got a lot of damage done in one night. I also wanted to ask about, I got a constituent complaint about an address on South 3rd Street. I was wondering if anything was being done, if anyone knows what I'm talking about. Did you guys get, did anyone else get that? Did you? It was a, Mr. Mocking?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I believe you're, it's the past only quarter of 3rd and 2nd row, yeah, 374. We've worked with the occupants of that property over the last couple of months. It has seen quite an increase more recently. Our code enforcement specialist, Donald Bennett, was out this last week. So I've been picking up some of that slack, excuse me, and just haven't made it over there. But I am aware of it. We've had direct contact with property owners. So it is my intent to reach out to them or begin a formal process of notification of potential declared persons which are not for, we need to petition for administrative warrant if needed. Given the severity of the condition of the property, it would likely qualify for a three-day turnaround on the warrant. Unfortunately, due to the day of the week, getting that in front of the judge on Thursday could be a little tricky. So I have to work with court clerk and see if we can get some happen on Friday.
Did you actually receive the email that you did not? Maybe I could forward that and you could let the person know that you were?
Absolutely. Yes, Mayor, Mr. Boone notified me of his conversation with the neighbor on Friday afternoon, late in the day. And then I saw some pictures on Facebook and then did drive back.
All right, thank you.
Business from the city manager. City street projects and funding status, staff report by Public Works and Development Director Fay Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I prepared really an informational piece regarding our city streets, projects, and funding, and hope in the end that the city council may consider passing forward. So I'll just dive into the memo and share the information. So a little over a year ago, on March 7th, 2022, the city council held a work session regarding city streets. At that time, information was shared regarding the condition of the city streets and the estimated cost to maintain and improve them. In 2019, the pavement condition index, PCI is what's commonly referred to, was 58, which is in the lower section of the fair category. At that time, the estimated cost to improve the city streets to the good category of 71 PCI or better was approximately $26.73 million. On July 18th, 2022, the city street conditions were reviewed and showed that the PCI had deteriorated to 54.7, which means a decline of 3.3 points during the three-year period and is now in the upper section of the poor category. At the work session, prices to rebuild eight street segments in the city were included. Six of the street segments were reestimated in late March and showed an average price increase of 65% from the previous cost one year ago. This past year, the cost of concrete and asphalt have doubled. The total cost for the six street segments, which are Row River from Thornton to Current Boulevard, East Whitaker from Gateway to Thornton, North 16th Street from Main to the Row River Trail, and another segment of North 16th Street from Curry to Ostrander, North Gateway, the Southbound Lane from the Vintage End to the Struck Stop, and West Harrison from River Road to R Street. The estimated total cost to rebuild the six segments, including design cost, is approximately $3.5 million. Staff has also received a quote to chip seal West Main Street from River Road to R Street and a combined scrub and chip seal, which is a double application similar to the one we did on South River Road, for a cost of $236,944. And that segment of North River Road would be from Main Street to Witten Bridge. At this time, staff is planning on releasing a joint request for proposals with Presswell, as we did last year, in the upcoming late May or early June, with the intent and hope the council will award the project to be in the 1st of July, which would allow the project to move forward in July. The cost to chip seal the streets is approximately 10% of the cost to rebuild them. So if we were to take and rebuild that section of River Road from Main Street to Witten Bridge, it would be approximately a million dollars. We can do a, what I'm proposing is to do the chip seal similar to the south side. There's a couple of areas in that section of road that would need to be dug out right there because the crack is pretty severe and there might be some potential damage to the road base. But I believe that we can get all that work done close to $150,000 to $200,000 total, extending the life of that section of road somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 years, short of reconstruction. So to dive into the street fund status, we've been tracking the revenues, I've been tracking the revenues for the city street fund. Both the city gas tax, which is 3 cents per gallon, and the state highway proportionate gas tax revenue are projected to be below the current year estimates. The city gas tax was projected in this current budget to be $375,000. Currently, we are tracking to raise approximately $320,000, which is a 15% less than what was estimated. The actual revenue, the state highway proportionate is budgeted at $840,000 and appears to be coming in about 5% less than the budgeted amount, estimated to be $40,000 less than the actual revenue budgeted, which in turn, presently, the current budget was to, we're going to be about $100,000 short of what was projected in the revenue side of the street. And presently, the current budget has enough money to fund the $1.25 million EDA match required by the state revitalization project. With that, there is no additional street funding in the current budget available for street reconstruction projects. In the proposed 2023-2024 budget, we're in the early stages of getting that prepared. The revenue not including the EDA Main Street grant is projected to be $1,275,000. The estimated operating expenses for doing the day-to-day operations of the street apartment is $930,000, which leaves approximately $345,000 for preservation and capital road improvement projects. There is no way possible for the current street revenues to meet the street improvement needs throughout the city. Before I get into some of the potential revenue items, I just want to share with the council. Included in the packet is a list of accomplishments from, starting in 2017 to 2018. I'll just give the numbers. But in fiscal year 1718, the street fund funded $765,762 worth of street improvement projects. In 1819, it was $853,861. And 2019 and '12 was $1,075,600. 2020, '21, another $1,849,66. I would share in that, those two years, proportioned that money, a large portion of that money was the state roster school, state funding that we received of $1.2 million for that state roster schools improvement project. Also, in the previous year, in 1819, is when we, I believe, rebuilt the Swinging Bridge and there was a state parks grant, but it was incorporated into that revenue. Then in 2021, '22, it was $286,557 spent in capital projects. And then presently, to date, in this current fiscal year, it's $310,850 worth. I would share that, so there was additional street improvement upgrades on South 10th Street in conjunction with the storm mardi project that took place between Tyler and Quincy. There was additional damage done to the westbound or the west side of 10th Street. And so we were able to repave that portion of the street and consider that a street improvement. So moving into what are some potential funding options? There are 10 listed here. Tried to be, listable what might possibly be an option. The first is increasing the gas tax. The city council could put before the citizens in Cottage Grove an increase in gas tax. The second is a transportation utility fee, commonly referred to as a top. That's a transportation fee that's added into the utility billing to the citizens in Cottage Grove. Currently, there is 3,970 accounts. So an additional fee could be charged if $10 was added for a transportation. If $10 was added for a transportation utility fee, it would generate, probably, close to Could reach out to the citizens to approve a bond measure, which would be a property tax measure, to fund projects. City of Eugene and Springfield have been very successful, their citizens have supported that. Eugene has been probably in the works for close to 20 years, and it's renewed every five years. They put together a set of projects, that the funding will do, then they have a citizen oversight committee that reviews the projects we're doing. And turns out, a report to the City Council and the citizens in the community that what was promised has been done. There's also the option of a local improvement district, commonly referred to as an LID. That is, in our Cottage Grove business, we'll go Chapter 7.04. It does require 67% of the properties within the LID boundaries that are created for projects in support for it to move forward. And it can be terminated if more than 33% of the owners decide that they've changed their mind on the LID support. I would share that, in talking this weekend with previous individuals in the city, that early on, in a lot of the streets that were created in this community or this city were created through LIDs. So the impacted neighboring properties paid for those improvements and all street developments. There's also the possibility of creating an urban renewal district. This has been discussed several times with the council. Essentially, create a district of an area, follow the rules that require the formation of it, and be able to use the tax mechanism called tax increment financing to do the improvements, borrow the money, and then increase in tax revenue that's brought in that service the debt for those projects. There are some items that may make it difficult to focus solely on streets, but it'd be a component of the larger urban renewal district. Another item is bonding. I believe bonds could be sold, but then the debt service has to come from the total revenue. We have established, right now, if we were to commit the excess hypothetically revenue in the street fund, I shared with you, looking at $350,000 to $375,000, that's not going to service a lot of debt and move the needle with our street repairs. There is companies out there, another option is infrastructure funding companies, but once again, yes, they may be qualified for the revenue alone to do the work, but then on the flip side, the general is having to service the debt. One item that I failed to mention in the previous March meeting was a local sales tax. It is not very popular in the state of Oregon, probably been shot down 12 times, and it's been sent to the voters, I believe, with my recollection. There is, I believe, one city in the state of Oregon that has a modified type sales tax. It's on restaurant and entertainment, and that's the city of Kachin. And the final option that I have, of course, here is the, it would be like a road use fee, similar to tolling on streets. It's fairly new in technology, but I will share with you, one of the challenges in funding the street repair is the generation of revenue and placing the entire burden on the citizens inside the city limits is going to be very difficult. It's expensive. If there was a way to capture Fay Stewart, who is four miles out of town, that doesn't pay the city tax, the city government, I do pay my gas taxes, but is there a way to incorporate revenue from people that live outside the city limits? I would estimate, I took time to think about it, I probably spend 50% of my driving time on city streets. The other and last option would be for the City Council to look at the existing revenues that are in the general fund. Presently, right now, the general fund generates $5.3 million. Those would be the dollars that could potentially be diverted to the street fund. It would most likely take some level of funding to get us up to about $1.2 million to start moving the needle on doing capital improvement projects each year. That would look like approximately one-fifth of the general fund, property tax revenue this brought in. So, very complicated, very difficult. I don't know that there's a clear-cut recommendation on how to move forward with this. Consequently, you get down to essentially, the recommendation that I would ask the City Council to consider is putting together an ad hoc committee that would be made up of each of the members of the council and mayor, and propose that the ad hoc committee appoint seven additional members from the community. I have kind of pulled my, from my day as a county commissioner, and we heard from the sheriff this evening, we were very mindful on how we put together a committee to work on public safety levy, that included the entire commissioners and an appointed individual from each commissioner to be on that working committee. It's important that people that get appointed to the committee is very thoughtful, that they are folks of influence in our community. They may not necessarily support, at the present time, the mechanism to increase, but hopefully at the end of our ad hoc committee, educating, explaining where we are to an in-depth, detailed presentation, and coming up with recommendations that in the end, hopefully, the members of the council and that body could recommend to the council ultimately, if there's something to be placed on the ballot or vote in November, that is supported by as many people as possible. Needs to be a, an effort that gets the information out to as many citizens as possible. So it needs to be, you know, very detailed, and my cell and staff members need to be available to answer questions from the committee and citizens as they come up, in hopes that the council moves forward with putting something on the ballot in August and moving towards the November election, that this effort is at every, every chance in receiving the support so that we can come up with the revenue necessary to start fixing our streets. Like, each of you drive on our streets. This winter has been extremely harsh on our streets, that we have seen failure at a rate higher than what our condition index has shown. Our crew is out filling potholes on a regular basis, and it doesn't feel like we're making any headway on our streets, I mean, to start being addressed at a higher level.
Counselor Fuck?
Yeah, oh, well, thank you so much for this. I know we've kind of kicked this can down the street a few times. Sorry. It's hard to make. So, one of the big pieces, and I'm sure everybody's aware, is that we don't want to pave streets without fixing the pipes under them as well. And so, you know, this, this really complicates this discussion because every crack in a road allows water to seep into the base, which is what ultimately destroys that road. And so, you know, as Director Stewart's mentioning, a lot of these areas where the alligatoring is, and you can actually see the waves in the road, that base is actually gone, and that road needs to be rebuilt. And so, the problem, though, is that we also have pipes in the ground that are 50 and 60 years old under that same street, that we need to replace as well. Otherwise, we end up cutting through that new road, creating another opportunity for water to get through there. So, I, that's where I, I think the TOF and the, you know, the bonding make a little sense because they're not constitutionally only for streets. So if we do a gas tax, those dollars can only go for the street, they cannot go, you know, for any of the other projects. That being said, maybe there's a mechanism where that captures some of the revenue from the folks out of town, like, like Mr. Stewart mentioned. I think this is a great conversation, I really do want to get a committee together. Our council had put a gas tax on the ballot, gosh, I don't know, was that six or eight years ago? And it failed. You know, and, and it's funny, because I've been beat up in the, you know, last few years about, you know, our streets, and clearly, I, we either did not get the message to the voters, or they're happy with the condition of the streets. My gather, I gather that is probably the first and not the second, because I, I see Facebook, and, you know, clearly, folks are unhappy with our streets. So I would love to have a committee. I actually am not looking for somebody who's supportive. I'm actually, you know, if we're each counselor appointing somebody, I really want somebody who's unhappy with the way the city's done things, but willing to read all the information. And so I'm putting this out there, that I do not want somebody who's happy, I'm not looking for somebody who's, you know, a rubber stamp, but somebody who's willing to read and become informed, and then if they want to say, do nothing, I'm probably going to vote against that anyway, but at least we will have that said. I want a very honest discussion with this community about what do we want for our streets? You know, these, this is our investment, you know, this is our city, and we can live with the streets as they are, or we can fix them. So, that's my two cents worth, and my call to action for those out there willing to do some homework.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you. I'm in support of a committee, and I like the, the idea of bringing in informed parties. I do, I do want to make sure that it's open to have ideas and thoughts brought that maybe aren't part of this initial proposal, if there's other things out there, and if they're, so I would expect that there would have to be adequate time to track down information, possibly additional resources for, to bring in that information. Because my, my disposition on this is that I don't think we should just keep doing the minimum. If we're going to do something, we should do something permanent, and something we can be proud of, and something that, that we can build on over time, and be innovative in that approach, and come together as a community in doing it. Get the sense that that's how we're going to unlock a lot of resource that is, is pent up right now, just waiting for something that really makes us be able to be proud of this town and what we drive on. So, we'll see what happens, but in general support of the proposal.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I love that we're talking about this, because it's such an uncomfortable topic. We all agree that something needs to be done, but what we don't agree on is how to do it. But that's okay, because we can come together, and we can work together, because we're amazing like that, and I believe that we can do it. I'd like to see, and Counselor Fuck, I think that you mentioned it on Friday during her agenda session, I'd like to see a community meeting where we can come together and bounce ideas off of each other, and I don't know how that discussion looks, but if we could all come together and do that, I would love that. Then my call to action would almost be, from that meeting, is anybody wanting to serve? Who wants to be a part of this? Because if the people that show up for these types of meetings have something to say, they want to be heard, and I want to hear them. I agree, I want somebody who doesn't necessarily follow this scope, but let's figure it out together. I think through that conversation, we're going to figure something out. I love the innovation, let's try something new, do something new, and it might potentially take a couple different things to come together and actually solve the problem, but a little bit here, and a little bit here, and a little bit here could really create more of a bigger piece of pie than just one little piece of pie. So I'm open to conversation, I'm also open to kind of a call to action, coming at a big community event, and not, not necessarily being handpicked. I don't want to handpick somebody, I want somebody who actually wants to give purpose. So if that is you, and we have to handpick somebody, contact me.
Counselor Senate?
So, thanks for this presentation, Mr. Stewart. Would you, would you say that there's, there's not a real way to make significant improvements without asking the public for more money? Can't we just better manage the money we have?
Mayor, Counselor Senate, I don't, I don't know how that's possible. I have prepared the street funding, I look at the required costs, we, part of our, I didn't bring my operating budget in with me, but essentially, we spend, we budget close to $100,000 just to pay for the light bill of the streetlights. We pay Lane County $20,000 a year to re-strike the streets. We essentially operate the street sweeper, which is approximately, I think, $150,000 worth of revenue. We start looking at those items, I can't see where we can be more efficient with those dollars. I will share with you the dollars that we do, I feel very confident that we're being efficient. So take, for instance, crack sealing is a, is a preservation, maintenance tech, you know, that we do to streets. I looked at what the cost would be to contract that product out, to actually physically have somebody coming in and crack seal. It's, four years ago, it was 90 cents to a dollar per, per lineal foot of crack that was sealed, is the cost. I looked at options, I researched, we rented a crack sealer, we were able to use our own, you know, budgeted employees in the utility division. We did three months for the crack sealing, and the product, we, out-of-pocket additional costs were approximately $50,000, and we did $250,000 lineal feet, that's what we estimated of crack sealing. Our team saved, did the work, and essentially saved $200,000 worth of street funding by us being able to do that work. Same thing is with the chip sealing. Three years ago, we purchased enough rock to do Gateway, East Main, West Main, and both North and South River Road between Harrison to Woodson Bridge. We still have rock on hand that we purchased three years ago at about, at least half the cost of what I would have to pay today for the same rock to do the job. So, we're working hard to be prudent with the resources and efficient. We're in the process of potentially purchasing a piece of equipment from Lane County called the Zipper. It's a, for lack of a better, you know, description, it's a large motor trailer that you push down the road with a front-end loader that grinds the street pavement up, enhances the base, and repairs the base and improves it so that the next layer of pavement hopefully lasts longer than the one that was before. The hope is, is that we'll be able to save a considerable amount of money on the Main Street project, down Bugger Street, where we're installing the affluent line, we use that Zipper to take care of the street. We're going to save dollars of basically removing, hauling the pavement off, and, you know, that additional cost. know, that additional cost. So, I guess my answer back to is the resources that we do have, I am working very diligently to be prudent with them, not stretching this far.
Counsel Mary Day.
So I want to return to what Counselor Fleck has also mentioned, the, the gas tax. I believe it was about four years ago, it was three cents per gallon. That would have been approximately 60 cents per fill-up. That's a straight user tax. If you don't drive, you don't pay it. If you drive more, you pay more. Plus it would capture revenue from the passerby's going down the interstate. That, the measure failed and it, in the same breath, citizens complained about the roads. It's got to take funding to do it. I wish it would be magical that we could snap our fingers and the roads would repair themselves, but it will cost. And it's going to take some creative funding to do it, but it is going to be at a cost. So, if the, if it is the desire of the citizenry to have a better, better conditioned roads, we'll have to figure out what they can stomach to pay for and how to, how to accomplish that. So, I'm looking forward to this chance for getting community input and getting the leadership from the community to help convince people that if we want good roads, we're going to have to figure out how we can pay for that service. Thank you.
Counsel Senate.
Thank you. If this isn't a quick question, it could be for later, but is there something stopping us from enacting a gas tax that's a percentage of the cost of a gallon of gasoline? Or do we have to do three cents, five cents, 10 cents? I mean, it'd be nice to, to share in the largesse of a high gas price.
The, the state constitution which regulates gas taxes, it determines where it goes, it says it's per gallon.
So we get three cents on 250, 450?
Yeah.
And just Mayor and Counsel Senate, it is, it was early on, the council did have the ability to actually just impose the gas tax, but that was taken away in the legislature. So we need that revenue increase and the gas tax has to go for front loaders.
Well, I, I support doing this and bringing the citizens' view into it. And thank you, Fay, for your hard work on this and some of your creative ideas. Appreciate it. All right.
So I guess as far as next steps, I, I really don't want to wait on this. I'd really like to get us moving forward because if we are putting a measure, then I think I read August, we need to make a decision on what we're doing by then. And I'm not suggesting that's where we're going to go, but, but that does put a window in time that we need to discuss all options. I would suggest, I, I don't know, I mean, I would suggest doing a town hall or just some sort of forum, you know, where folks can give us some feedback soon, within a month. I would, I would really like to get jumping on it.
And I guess the, the question would be, do you want to get the committee put together to be at that forum and get that feedback? I'm trying to think how we're going to speed that process up because you've got till August 14th, I think, yeah, August 14th. And then we have to get it on a ballot. If there's going to be anything on the ballot, it has to be by the first part of September. I don't know if I've got the date on there, in order for it to be on the November ballot. So, you know, regardless of the desire to have the town hall first, I think, I think it'd be more effective if you had that committee as a part of that town hall, ready to listen and take input and have some discussion. And maybe even have a little bit of knowledge going through this kind of information so they have some information that they can help ask questions and try to get more, more creative ideas. We've thrown a few on here that nobody's doing in the state. And so I think that's, to speed things up, that may be the best way.
Counsel Irvin.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that we, we need a committee to, to even kind of dictate how that town hall will be held, how it will run, what the actual options are, whether or not we want to do that, whether or not based on the options, we think that we should even be targeting the November. So at least initial meetings of inquiry to see where it's going to go. And if that, if, if we could do that even before we pick members or if it's really necessary, I, I think the sooner we meet to, to steer that direction the better.
What if we put it out on the city website that we are looking for people to be part of this committee and then we could each one of us choose one from the list or do something along those lines?
We could set that for a deadline to have that done by May 8th, the next meeting, and then we could start looking at setting dates for that group to meet and start preparing the, the town hall.
If we, I, what if we put out a call for members and we could also encourage ourselves to make connections and then we could decide as a group who to appoint? Good process.
Like have a meeting, like have a meeting with us first and, and figure out how that's going to go, but also say this is the direction we're heading. If we have interest, please contact and put your name in the poll.
Counsel Savage.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Just a couple more thoughts since I've been sitting here. I grew up in Ashland and had that 5% food tax. Ashland is a little bit different than Cottage Grove. It's a college town with a lot of money. And folks, if they really see the 5% sales tax which went to roads, it's out of sight, out of mind, but I think that it'll probably be really devastating for our community. But it was implemented there and it still works there and it works wonderfully because we're capturing the tourists so that folks that come in to visit, so it's not just the locals that are paying. I'm not sure that that would work for us. The other component, if we're going to be doing a town hall, I don't know if the program that we used the last time has this capability, but if there's a way to stay on the slide, if you're on your device and you're working on a write-in option, if you can stay on that slide even when the presenter switches to the next slide, you can, you can stay back at these slides, but you can't go forward. So if you're already done, you can't keep moving forward. The presenter is what leaves it, but if there's a way to remain back so you can finish your thought before the slide is then moved and then all of my words are gone because I didn't hit send in time, I don't know if that's a possibility, but if that's something that we can look at.
Yeah, I hope not to be, I'll look and see. But there might be another program that'll do it.
Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
All right.
So what did we decide on there?
We didn't decide anything yet, so.
That there would be a first meeting in, at May? That there would be a, we'll schedule a first work session in May? Was that?
Kind of like I heard multiple people saying we should probably start averaging for interested citizens, so I'm assuming we would use a similar process as we do for all the other committees that we have. Citizens apply for, we can do advertising and we can submit to get applicants that apply. I too would encourage, Counsel, Mary Day said, reach out to individuals. I, you guys can choose, the council can choose how you want to fill those positions for the people that have applied. And once we have that, then, so the city manager said we can put together, find the dates of work for all the city committee members and put together an itinerary of what our meetings will look like and town hall and the various different components that this ad hoc committee would like to see included.
So, are you going to select members yourselves? Are you going to do it as a group? If you do it as a group, then you're going to have a meeting to do that? If you do it individually and people get ahold of you, you can do it before the meeting and it'll be done, what are you going to do?
Can I ask a clarifying question? We have a work session scheduled for Saturday, May 6th. If we were to come together and say, we have people, oh my gosh, I don't have anybody, we have applicants and I don't know if we can, make a decision, talk about it and then maybe make the announcement that Monday, the next city council meeting? And that is the next council meeting, but we are getting together in a work session already.
Yeah, what if, what if we use that works? I know, we had talked about, that's the goal setting one.
Right.
So we had talked about maybe even taking our time with that one and, and breaking that into a couple. I think that might be wise. And maybe take part of that time. I, I kind of want to, like, war game, like what roles are going to really be necessary? What information do we want to gather? And that might dictate who we pick. And you might know somebody that is really good for that role or the calls to action might, might raise somebody else. You know, we all have different spheres of influence that could, that could be useful. And I think it'd be nice to be able to strategize as a, as a council about how we pick these people. It's going to be crucial for success.
And I think whatever the process, having the city, you know, open up applications for a subcommittee, I think makes sense because at least then we have that list to start from, depending on how we want to do it, whether it's each counselor chooses somebody or the group as a whole. Whichever way we go, at least we have that list to start. And I would still encourage folks to reach out to us if they're interested, if they want a way in, you know, reach out to your counselors, say, hey, this is something I'm really passionate about, I'd like to be involved.
So how many of you are be available? The, the work session's scheduled from 9:00 to 12:30. Would you be able to go until 1:00 or 1:30?
Okay.
Because we've got facilitators coming, so they've got it set to what they're doing for the time. We don't want to divide them up.
And I want to clarify, I was thinking in addition to what we were already doing, not substituting.
So we do that after the work session, after the, the goal-setting retreat stuff?
The facilitators are for the goal-setting or for the other?
Huh?
Who are the goal, facilitators for?
The goal-setting retreat.
Who are they?
Mayor McArdle and Mayor Entke from North Bend and from Independence.
All right.
We haven't quite yet been able to.
Was that requested by the council?
It was putting together the, the retreat, yeah. So, the goal setting.
Gotcha. All right.
So if everybody's ready, we can do that after the retreat and go until 1:30 if we have to.
All right. All right. Report from the city manager.
Just a couple items. One, the Chamber banquet is coming up very soon and we have some people who haven't let us know if they want to come or not. Please let Mindy know or I know after this meeting so we can get you registered tomorrow morning. The goal-setting, we just brought that up, that it's the sixth Saturday of the May, May 6th from 9:00 to 12:30. Now it's from 9:00 till 12:30 and then we have another meeting after that from 12:30 to 1:30. And then on the graffiti, we sent staff around, they're taking a lot of pictures, they're trying to get as much data as we can and also contacting people that we know have cameras and if anybody else has cameras. It did have to take them quite a cinderel amount of time because they were everywhere. In addition to that, over the weekend, and I don't know if Counsel Irvin or Counsel Mary Day know this, but our restrooms in the Armory were also destroyed during the youth celebration. The men's restroom was marked up on the walls. They put soap all over the walls and the door. It ate the finish off the door, needs to be refinished. So, we've got other problems from youth, even when they're involved with a positive thing, they still can't seem to behave. So there's issues associated with that. So we're working on trying to get that cleaned up and try to get costs squared away with that. The chief wanted to make some comments about the graffiti and the efforts that the department's making on the graffiti work too.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, unplanned, unscripted, but I thought it was important that you hear from your chief, even though interim, still the chief. Really, really disheartening when these things happen. And I can tell you throughout my career, things like this happen way more than we would like them to be. We will see rashes of cars broken into over the course of the night, like 12:00 to 15:00. We'll see graffiti sprees that happen. And there's no excuse and I just, the main message is as your chief, on which you know the buck stops here. I will be looking in and seeing, you know, finding out what I can and making sure that we are looking at every avenue to hold those accountable. I can certainly assure you that the level of accountability that everybody would like to have is probably not going to happen because they're juveniles and our system is just not built that way, but we still hold them accountable. There could be some parental responsibility, we'll have to explore that. But I, I do want you to know that when things like this happen, as a chief, I'm embarrassed. I know some of your officers, I'm sure, feel pretty sheepish because you don't want this to happen on your watch. So, as I said, I wanted you to hear that, I want the community to hear that from the chief. We are, part of where we're heading as your police department is to be accountable. And we're accountable to everybody. So when these things happen, we need to take them seriously and make sure you all know that, that we're paying attention. We don't just chalk it up to, oh well, stuff happens. That's not how we operate now. I've already spoken to Dale, he came up, another example of an, of an incident that I'm going to look into and find out what happened. You all know the challenges we're facing right now, working hard to fill staffing and, but we, we still will provide the very best service we can with, with what we have and moving forward. So, that was it. I just wanted to address that. So thank you for the, the extra time. Before I walk away, any questions?
In reading our current goals, I think this community engagement, I thought I saw something about community, like a neighborhood communication with the police department. Do you have anything ready if neighbors and neighborhoods say, what can I do? How can I be providing information? Can we get ready communication to share our camera feeds? How should, you know, any education for, for this so that we can be a more accountable community?
Yeah, Mayor, Counsel Irvin, great point, great question. I, I want to echo what the mayor said, first of all, and that is, it takes many eyes to be successful, right? And no police department can function in and of itself and, and be as successful as the community wants it to be. We need tips, we need people to call. We've gotten a lot of information. I had pictures emailed to the general email account yesterday afternoon. That's when I first learned of the graffiti. We've had folks come in that have got camera footage, so I'm going to make sure that all of that is getting to the right places. But the point on that is we really, really rely on, on the community. There has to be that partnership. It's really at the heart of community policing, you hear that term, but that's really what it comes down to. More specifically, yeah, I think there's a lot of things we can do and we may not have the actual pieces in place right now, but we can certainly beg, borrow and steal those places or those pieces, excuse me, crime prevention, neighborhood watch. These are all things that have been around for decades that, that are all successful in their own right. So, I think as, as the police department moves forward and more importantly, as I shared with you in email, there, there's going to be a lot on the plate of your new chief. And I can tell you on that note that your staff, your city manager and I and others, excuse me, my voice isn't quite back for a minute, are very, very in tune and, and we are setting a very high bar and there's not going to be any shortcuts when it comes to finding the new leader for your police department. I am going to take, as I know, just based on conversations that I've had with Mr. Myers, we're going to take that very, very seriously and make sure that we, we get the very best. Having said that, when that individual is here and brought on, they're going to have a very full plate. And which really translates to a lot of great opportunities, a lot of opportunities to, to get those programs established, to get, make those inroads with the community, to start analyzing the data that you and I have talked about, Counsel Irvin, closely and share that and be transparent and really build those partnerships. I, I would, I would love to do that, but there's just not going to be enough time for me while I'm here, but certainly we can get those things moving and we have law enforcement partners that we can utilize some of those resources for. Mr. Proshu is here tonight. We've appeared at his HOA in Middlefield, Jake the first time, and then the following month I went and talked about crime prevention. I'm available to do that, that's easy. As long as I'm in town, I'll, I'll show up. So if there's a neighborhood group that is listening tonight and is like, hey, let's do something like that, absolutely. Those things are easy, so we can do that in the meantime. meantime. But I hope that answers your question.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Business from the city attorney.
No business this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Since you're here, I thought that we might use you just a little bit for a few questions that council might have, moving forward, just because we haven't personally, many of us, dealt with the city attorney much, and I kind of want to know some parameters. When I called you the other day, I asked you, what kind of client attorney privilege do council, does council have with you, especially if we're dealing with a manner about a city employee? And does this stay between us? Or who is your client? Is your client the city? Is your client the city manager? Is your client us?
So the client is the city, and the city acts through the city council, unless the city council has delegated responsibilities to the city manager through the city charter. So that's the kind of a long way of saying, it depends. A lot of my communications and anybody from my office are going through the city manager or various directors, whether that's public works director or chief of police, but there's oftentimes that that attorney-client privilege runs directly to the city council.
Okay.
So I don't know if I answered your question there?
You did.
Okay.
And then my other question is, is the phone line, is that an eight-by-eight number?
Yes. No.
Okay. And then also, I, serial meetings, I wanted some clarification on that. So, for instance, we had, I asked that the paperwork that was given to the Chronicle on the police department be given to council, so that we could use that in our executive session, and we were more informed. And the city decided to do it a little different way, and have us each come in to preview the documents. And so I had some concerns there, with we're each in the office reviewing something at different times, and how that works, and how serial meetings, if you could explain that, I would find it helpful.
So I think of a serial meeting as, for example, you, Mayor, talking with Counselor Urban about a future agenda item, maybe this way to figure out how to raise money for the streets. And you guys are coming up with a plan, and then Counselor Urban talks to Counselor Fleck and says, hey, the mayor and I just met, here's what we're thinking, here's what we'd like to do, how do you feel? And then you go to the fourth counselor, and now we're at four, now we've got a quorum of four that have been deliberating or debating towards a city business item. And so that's what we'd like to avoid, is for you individual counselors talking amongst each other.
Absolutely, and that part I understand, but I was reading, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the city manager is also included in that. That's not true.
I am very confident that that is not true, but I would, I guess, like to maybe be able to confirm that. I don't love giving legal advice from here without being able to pull up some authority on that, but no, you can, I'm very certain, you can individually talk to the city manager.
On the same item, one after another?
As long as you're not talking amongst yourselves.
Would you be so kind to check up on that and double-check it, just to make sure we're not breaking any meeting laws?
You bet.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question with the city attorney? Counselor?
There was a concern in that period of time of what was executive session and what wasn't, and what are matters of, you know, personnel or policy investigation. And it just felt strange that, I thought it was, I understood the representation to be that that time in the city manager's office with him, you know, interacting while reading was, was executive session. And so I didn't know how that could possibly be. Doors were open, other, people could hear, which, you know, there's potentially, so...
Yeah, that was not an executive session.
So, so we were able to review documents outside of executive session that were specific to executive session?
Yeah, you can, to prepare for that.
So why did it have to be in the office?
That's just one method for giving you, giving each council the opportunity to review sensitive information.
We couldn't, we all had copies of that.
I'm sorry.
Why couldn't we just had copies to review on our own time?
That was, I guess that was an option, but some of these documents are still privileged, they're still confidential, and so trying to keep control of those documents best that we can as a city, and keep keeping them at city hall, is also a consideration to make when we're trying to figure out how best to give you the opportunity to prepare for a meeting, but also maintain the...
So, the other part, I mean, this is clearly a sensitive personnel issue, right? And it's, it's an uncharted area for me personally. In the process of inquiry, just think of any, any process of inquiry where there's a subject of the inquiry, having them present and having them be able to exert influence over that time seems, it changes the environment, it changes the dynamic, and it's, you know, it seems improper to me to, there's time for that to be, time for someone to be able to give an account for what, what is, and to respond, but there needs to be an environment where, where you can ask questions, ask for data, get that uninfluenced in that process leading to gather information. So I'm just, do you, what's your opinion on that? Can we structure future things in that kind of a way, so that we can, you know, proceed with integrity and, and just clear-mindedness?
Yeah, and I think that the answer to that is probably those questions that you would like to ask would be asked in executive session, for, as a part of that review. And the way that you're looking at me tells me I did not answer your question, though.
Well, partially, I'm sure it's because I'm formulating some of this on the fly, thinking about it in response, so maybe it's best to put it in an email.
I'm really getting uncomfortable with this, I think this needs to stop. If we're going to have this conversation, it needs to be in executive session. I will tell you, having served up here for, you know, starting 20 years ago, when we invented executive session, the documents were handed out, they were always collected, and in fact, we have never had council ever receive documents that they took on, ever appeared in 20 years. And I'm finding this line to be really out of line, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep my patience, I'm a little tired, and my foot is killing me, so please bear with me, but I would really much rather have this conversation next meeting, than do this appropriately, rather than asking questions that are just public at this point.
I wanted to take the opportunity, since we don't get the city attorney with us often, and so, and these were questions that would help us move along. All right. I don't think we, okay, well, we'll have to agree...
We're in murder. Madam Mayor, you said that you were going to control the folks in the audience, and I appreciate you guys coming by.
Come on, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.